The following is a production of Cary TV, the town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the August 28th meeting of the Cary Town Council, and at this time,
Thank you. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at Agenda Item 1.3, which is the adoption of our agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. That takes us to Item 2.1, which is recognitions, reports, and presentations. Mayor Pro Tem Gail Adcock will present the Charcot-Marie Tooth Awareness Month proclamation at this time.
It's kind of hard to get your mouth around that, but you don't have to say bilateral salpinga oophorectomy every day, and I do. I'd like to ask John Shaw, Margaret Lee, and Evelyn Klein to join me at the mic, please. While they do that, I'll just say that Charcot-Marie Tooth Disorder is a disease named for the three physicians, Dr. Jean Martin Charcot, Pierre Marie in Paris, France, and Dr. Howard Henry Tooth in Cambridge, England, who first identified the disease in 1886 and published papers describing it in the 1890s. It's my honor to present this fine group of folks, this proclamation recognizing September 2014 as Charcot-Marie Tooth Awareness Month in the town of Cary. Let me just first say, come on up here, y'all can be seen. Thank you. Whereas Charcot-Marie Tooth Disorder, or CMT, is one of the most common inherited neurological disorders, affecting approximately one in every 2,500 people in the United States and an estimated 57 people in Cary, North Carolina, whereas CMT is characterized by a slow and progressive degeneration of the motor and sensory nerves in the feet, lower legs, hands, and forearms, causing loss of normal function and/or sensation that can be severely disabling, and may be accompanied by chronic pain and overwhelming fatigue. Whereas patients with CMT must constantly advocate on their own behalf to doctors, medical professionals, and educators who are often unaware of or insufficiently educated about the disorder, its symptoms, and the obstacles faced by those affected by the disorder. Whereas the Charcot-Marie Tooth Association is dedicated to supporting the development of new drugs to treat CMT, to improve the quality of life for people with CMT, and to ultimately find a cure for CMT. Whereas the CMTA Strategy to Accelerate Research, STAR, that's ingenious, initiative is making great strides towards developing therapies for CMT. Now therefore, I, Gail Adcock, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr. and the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as Charcot-Marie Tooth Awareness Month in the town of Cary to create, to increase the awareness of CMT and draw attention to this health problem and the importance of detection and treatment, proclaim this 28th day of August 2014. Would one of you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Let me give you this.
Mayor Pro Tem Adcock, members of the Town Council, and Mayor Weinberg, on behalf of Charcot-Marie Tooth Association, the many people, and especially the estimated 57 people in Cary with CMT, thank you for the proclamation. Charcot-Marie Tooth Disease is known as the most serious disease no one has ever heard of. More awareness won't help us get a cure, but it will help many people, lead many people to a diagnosis. So again, thank you very much.
And thank you for being here this evening and making us aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next agenda item is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. There's a three-minute time limit, and I will have to enforce that to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium. When the light, when the green light turns yellow, that means the speakers have 30 seconds remaining. When the time expires, the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, and at that time, I'm not trying to be rude, but I will immediately interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments. And I think all of our speakers in advance were adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups allow a spokesperson to speak on behalf to reduce repetitive comments. I thank all the people in our audience this evening for respecting that this is a business meeting, and so please do not applaud, make remarks from your seat, or anything else that might distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and
Well, must be public.
It must be public.
Please.
Hearing.
Ah. Wrong one. Now I understand.
Public speak out. So we can speak out anything?
Hi, my name is Ed Casper. I'm the president of the Harmony HOA, and recently, we sent a letter to your board, and we got the answer. And I wanted to thank the board for not forgetting about our children. I'll be passing this out, and you already had the previous letter, but I just wanted to make you aware that the Harmony does appreciate your concern for our children. And I want to take a second opportunity to thank the Herdens and the Burt's, which are neighbors, and they are presenting their waiver recommendation for their rezoning. And I wanted to say thank you for, to them, for inviting us into the discussion, which again is a neighborly thing to do. So I appreciate the Town Council, and our neighbors, and the Harmony. Cary is a very nice place to live, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out.
Good evening. I'm Marla Durrell, and I've been a proud resident of Cary for 25 years. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Kids Together, which is the all-volunteer nonprofit organization that supports that very special place in Cary where everyone goes to play, and that's Kids Together Playground. With me is Terry Rumley, who's the president of Kids Together this year. Tonight, we want to say thank you. Thank you for the recent renovations at Kids Together Playground. After 14 years of play, some of the equipment simply wore out. So we want to thank you for approving the budget that reinvested in this special place that so many kids and families in Cary enjoy. The renovation took place at the end of March and the beginning of April, and during that time, we had snow, we had freezing rain, we had sleet, and the construction continued. We really owe a special thanks to the Public Works crews who came out and worked in the most miserable weather ever and never complained once, and that's pretty special. But they really were not alone. There were a lot of volunteers who pitched in and helped. Actually, all told, there were 114 volunteers who contributed 433 hours of effort, and for that, we owe a huge, cagey thank you. Finally, our heartfelt thanks go out to the town of Cary and all the staff members who touched this project, and there were many, but especially want to recognize two. The volunteer coordinator for the town, Sarah Justice, did a great job of rounding up volunteers and keeping track of them through all the eight days of construction. But most of all, we want to thank Amy McIntosh, landscape architect with the town, who began with the project, managed it, managed it through its development and implementation, and met with our board to be sure that the spirit of Kids Together lived on in the new design. So now, Terry Rumley, our president of Kids Together, has an invitation for you and everyone in our community.
Hi, I'm Terry Rumley, and on behalf of the entire board, we would like to invite you all to join us on Saturday, September 20th, for our annual fundraising. One of our annual fundraising events is our Walk for Inclusiveness. We'll begin at 10:00 with music and games. The walk will begin at 11:00. We'll walk from Kids Together Park across, down the Henshaw Greenway four ways, across the pedestrian bridge to McDonald Woods Park and back. Strollers, wheelchairs, it's all welcome because Kids Together, like Kids Together Park, this walk is for all kids of all ages and all abilities. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out.
Go ahead, Glenda. Crutch is trump everything, Glenda. Go for it.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of council. I'm Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight to speak on rezoning case 13 REC 28. It's on your agenda tonight. It's the north rezoning. And first, I'd like to take, thank council for allowing the item to be tabled at your last meeting to give us time to address the concerns that were raised by you at the last council meeting. The conditions have been revised. We've added several new conditions. We have a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. We added a condition that the lot sizes within 50 feet of the northern property line will be 9,000 square feet. We also added conditions that will ensure that some of the setback requirements and the TR zoning exceed those of the, of the TR zoning requirements. And in, in listening to a, a comment and concern about central mailboxes, we did add a condition, working with staff, to address the concern. With these changes, we do feel that any development that occurs on the site, there, the lots will be equal to or larger than many of the lots that are out there. We are larger than the minimum lot sizes, and we do, and we are comparable with the average lot sizes with the surrounding neighborhood. We do believe that we have adequately addressed the concerns that were raised by council, and we ask for council to approve the rezoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top, and hopefully a speedy recovery for you.
Thank you. I'll be away in a minute. Today is my first day walking, so it's a little slow.
Take your time.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, excuse me, I'm getting over battle aorticitis. My name is Len Neiman. I ride C-Trans, and I'd like to make a couple of quick comments about consent agenda item 4.6, the interlocal transit study thing. I would just, considering that one of the major players in the region pretty much only operates during the peak rush hours, I would hope our staff, the transit staff for the town, once the study gets going, would keep reminding the people doing this study that people need to get to appointments and shop for their families during times outside of the peak hours, and people want, especially seniors, to get to recreational and dining things outside of peak hours. So if they start getting focused on peak rush hour activities and forget that, I would hope staff would just kind of gently remind them of that. Plus, evening hours are nice. It helps those of us that want to participate in the town's government to do so, and I thank you for extending the hours because it makes it much easier to do so, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Neiman. Next speaker, please. Anyone to, anyone else to speak at
Hey, I'm Will Darden, resident in Weatherstone Community, and we've got a issue. There were some traffic calming lines put in in '07 and some other measures. I think they had very good intentions in one section of the neighborhood. It's made it unsafe for citizens, for pedestrians. There've been several near misses. I've almost hit somebody, wrecked my night, wrecked the pedestrian's night. It was very close. Mirrors stripped off cars, mailbox is hit. Basically, WL lines very close to the curb. The town is going to repave, and we're asking that those lines not be reapplied. Very simple request. That's our first request. I know there's a 70% requirement. What we did do was we sent a simple flyer out, say, hey, do you approve? We got 50% like that with no extra effort. If 70% is absolutely required, we would like to request a little bit more time to go talk to people. I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of people. Vast majority do support this. There, there is a consensus in the neighborhood.
We'd appreciate an extension if that would be agreeable to everyone. We think it was a great effort. It was a great idea. It's just, over the years, I've lived there for 21 years, and what it did was throw the traffic closer to the curve, and I happen to live on the blind curve, as we are entering and exiting our driveway. And it's, it's dangerous for our children to engage in entering the highway. So we would love an opportunity to get that 70% if that's what you would like. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'll close Public Speaks Out. And that'll take us to Agenda Item 4, which is the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. And for the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. One vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Annexation request by Cornell and Fernidia Cannaby. I apologize if I butchered that name. Resolution ratifying the Patel Brothers Retail Shops Development Plans. Amendment to Traffic Schedule. Recognition of Grant from REI for Hemlock Bluffs Nature Preserve Improvements. Interlocal Agreement for Wake County Transit Investment Strategy. Lease and Interlocal Agreement with Wake County for the old Reedie Creek Road Trailhead. Utility Capital Project Budget Amendment Adjustments. Authorization for the possession and consumption of beer and wine at select downtown Cary's special events. Would council members like any of these items pulled from consent or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I would just, I would actually like to vote against item 4.3. So I'm not sure if we can take that off and individually vote on that one item, or if we have to vote on all of these together.
Well, if we withdraw our motion, we can have that pulled and approve the consent agenda, and then we can have that later.
Yeah, I'm happy to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Motion to approve all items but 4.3, you said?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We're pulling item 4.3 for discussion, and which one is that again?
Ratification of resolution for the Patel Brothers Retail Shops.
Okay, I got it.
And I don't intend on really having a discussion.
Right.
I've made my points known at the last meeting. I just, I don't want to vote for a consent agenda with that being part of it.
Very good. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. This is item five on your agenda. The first item is 5.1. It's an owner-initiated annexation. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will present this item. We're going to open up the public hearing, and council may take action on this item tonight. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of 12.85 acres of property located on Green Level Church Road, the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Green Level Church Road, Cortland View Lane, and Mills Park Drive. Property is in Cary's ETJ, and it's currently zoned transitional residential conditional use. Request is associated with subdivision plan number 14 SB 06, which is a proposed development of 64 lots for townhome units.
Okay, very good. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for this annexation petition, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation petition 14-AO3.
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. This takes us to item 5.2. It's a public hearing for an amendment to the town's tree protection regulations for champion trees and other related changes. Mr. Barker of our staff will present this item. We're going to open up the public hearing, and council may take action on this item this evening. Mr. Parker.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Before you this evening is a comprehensive revision to our tree protection regulations. This process is involved a stakeholders' meeting, feedback from the environmental advisory board, two planning and zoning board work sessions, and two council work sessions. What you have before you is a nine-month effort that is attempted to address numerous comments and balance competing objectives. There have been a significant number of changes since council's first public hearing and the planning and zoning board's public hearing, and council has directed staff to hold an additional public hearing. Before I get into the details of the ordinance, I want to share with you the overall approach to this for its development. In order to balance competing interest, this ordinance allows design flexibility in exchange for saving champion trees. Secondly, the ordinance implies that protection of champion trees is more important than areas planted with new trees or areas with smaller existing trees. During the development of this ordinance, council directed staff to make sure we maintain the integrity of our requirements, especially as it relates to protecting existing single-family development. And lastly, there is a limit on how much a site can be placed in open space due to the protection of champion trees as well as other open space required or provided by the applicant. I will briefly go over the seven key components of these regulations. These components will work together to provide the opportunity to preserve champion trees. First, the definition of champion tree has changed since the original ordinance. Original ordinance had champion trees at 30 inches, caliber inches or greater. This allows for any single tree that measures 40 caliber inches or greater for pines, 32 caliber inches or greater for upper-story trees other than pines, and 12 caliber inches for certain under-story trees. Also, if a certified arborist can document that the tree is dead or dying, or that the tree is abnormal, then it would not be classified as a champion tree. At the last council work session, we were directed to potentially come up with two categories of champion trees, and we kept it simple, large and small champion trees. Large champion trees means any upper-story hardwood champion tree that is 40 caliber inches or larger are, are certain under-story trees that are 15 inches or larger. While, while small champion trees means any upper-story should be under-story tree, upper-story tree that's less than 40 inches, and certain under-story trees that are less than 15 inches. The section dealing with champion tree protection requirement has been expanded to include a priority list. You say, well, why do we have a priority list for champion trees? Well, the reason for that is because we want to make a statement that certain champion trees have more value than others. We also want to make it clear to the development community on which trees to save first when they're designing their site. We also have expanded and clarified the approval authority for when staff can administratively approve the removal of champion trees and when, when council would have to make that decision. This is the first called Tier One Champion Trees. This ordinance sets forth this priority list, and so champion tree groupings and large champion trees have more value and are placed in Tier One. A tree grouping are where two, or champion tree groupings and large champion trees have the most value, and a tree grouping is where two champion trees share the same critical root zone, and those champion trees and groupings in prominent areas are the most valuable, while large champion tree groupings and trees in non-prominent areas make up the lower level of Tier One. You might be asking, what, what is prominent location? And that means any area that's along arterial or collector roadway, along a public or private street interior to the site, or surrounded by buildings or homes on at least two sides, or immediately adjacent to, or within 20 feet of a public greenway easement or greenway property boundary. The next highest value of trees are Tier Two. These are small champion trees located adjacent to other open space in non-prominent locations, trees that are forked, and any sweetgum trees. And the last priority is any single champion pine tree located anywhere With regard to when a champion tree can be administratively approved by staff, we have certain situations when that can occur. After all the 12 allowable modifications are used... After all the 12 allowable modifications or use, which I'll talk about later, staff can approve the removal of champion trees when due to utility lines, roadways, or pedestrian requirements, other infrastructure requirements, or due to the way the site design requirements impact the location of buildings and other things. And more than 25% of the critical root zone is impacted, then staff can administratively approve the removal of that tree, no matter what size it is. A critical root zone is an area that extends out from a champion tree based on the caliber inches. This proposal ordinance is 1.25 feet per caliber inches. So, for example, a 40-inch champion tree critical root zone would extend out in a circular manner of 50 feet from the tree. The other opportunity for removal of champion tree is when the required open space limit is met and the champion tree is included on the Tier Two list. So, that's either 30% on developing sites and 15% on sites within the town center or redevelopment sites. So, you might want to ask what we mean by open space. Well, it means, for this section, it means all buffers, streetscapes, floodplains, open space required through zoning conditions, champion tree protection areas, community gathering spaces, bonus open space for conservation residential subdivisions, and other non-residential open, non-regulated open space that's set aside by the developer and residential subdivisions. And that has to be done so it's permanently protected. A third way for staff to allow for the removal of a champion tree is due to the site's topography. In order to meet town design standards or requirements, such as roadway elevations or sidewalks, sometimes the finished grade has to be adjusted. And if that elevation will result in a champion tree critical root zone, area being 10 feet or more below or above grade on more than one side, then the staff could allow for the removal of that tree. And the last opportunity for the removal of the tree by administrative approval would be that the tree is less than 10 years, has less than 10 years of life expectancy, and 25% or more of the tree's canopy is dead or dying, and/or two or more of the major limbs are dead or dying. And this has to be certified by, has to be documented by a certified arborist. With regard to when council becomes involved with the removal of a champion tree, that would be any large champion tree or any champion tree grouping not meeting the 25% of the more critical root zone impact, or if the site hasn't reached that 30% or 15% cap on open space, and they're wanting to remove a healthy champion tree. So, that would come before you in a quasi judicial hearing. Okay. One of the important steps in preserving champion trees, of course, is identifying those trees on site. And the proposal ordinance provide two alternative ways to do surveys, which should reduce the cost of surveys. One alternative is to focus on just disturbed areas of the site, and that would most likely be used when you're potentially redeveloping the site or only affecting a certain area of the site. So, you would identify all champion upper-story specimen trees within disturbed areas, and then all champion trees within 100 feet of disturbed areas, or, and all upper-story specimen trees within 50 feet. And specimen trees are those trees that are 18 inches or larger. The next alternative they could use is to identify all champion trees throughout the boundary of the site, and then identify all upper-story specimen trees and within the buffers and streetscapes, and all those upper-story specimen trees located within 50 feet of any buffer streetscape. So, that significantly on a pretty significant site lowers the number of trees, specimen trees that applicant needs to survey, because most likely those trees would be gone due to the construction of the site. The next section is one of the most critical sections, and this is the trade-offs. And there's 12 modifications allowed for the applicant to trade off in exchange for saving champion trees or flexibility in the design of the site. So, the first one, and these are in priority order, so they need to actually, applicant would need to go through 1 through 12 in order. They couldn't just jump to 11 and start using that. They'd have to go through these. So, the first one is parking reductions. You can reduce parking up to 25%. That's something the applicant would choose, how much parking they would reduce it to. We have a requirement for linear parking lot lines to break up parking in the middle, and so they could reduce or eliminate those in exchange for tree protection areas or critical champion tree protection area. Item Three is community gathering space area credit, and that would just mean within an area you require a certain amount of community gathering space in sites. And the area where that champion tree could use this credit, but it still wouldn't get somebody out of, if there were hardscapes that were required to be put in there to make it a legitimate community gathering space, they would not be able to get out of that requirement. Then, bonus open space credit, and that's within a conservation residential subdivision. There are requirements for bonus open space, and so these champion tree areas could be allowed to do that, and they don't have to be contiguous to the open space. The residential lot lines are required to be at substantial right angles, but when you might be adjacent to a critical root zone that's being saved of a champion tree, of course, it's circular, and so there may be a chance that you could allow a not substantially right angle residential lot line, as long as you can show you have a buildable lot on what's remaining. Residential lot setback reductions, and those would only occur if you're adjacent to a critical root zone that's in a common open space. So, that's real important to know. Item Seven is to allow certain street requirements to be modified, such as street, I guess, street connectivity, or potentially the depth of an intersection, or some other private street design, provided that it truly can be proven that it still remains a high level of safety within that, that we'd have to review it and make sure that the public's safety is adhered and not compromised. Number Eight would be allowing critical root zones to be platted within lots. And so, that was something that we talked at the last work session, and that would be an avenue on Item Eight, if they get to that level. Interior non-residential buffers. Talked about reducing those down and still meeting the planning requirements for the buffers. Last meeting, there was some discussion about how narrow to have that, and also the concerns about impacts on sidewalks and paved areas. Now, I've got another slide after this to talk about that. And then residential, I mean, buffers adjacent to non-residential areas. And so, if a site was having a non-residential use or a non-residential, adjacent to a non-residential zone that hadn't developed yet, they could reduce that buffer. And I can talk with that, too. And then, the 11 is something that council wants to come back with alternatives, a couple alternatives, and that's allow bio-retentions in streetscapes and buffers. And I've got those two options for council to give us direction on following the public hearing. And then, the last one is, the last resort is to reduce the critical root zone. And right now, it's 1.25 feet per caliber inch, and this would go down to one foot per caliber inch. Okay. And like I said, the staff has evaluated, you know, how small a buffer between non-residential uses could be. And that would be, we say it would be 10 feet or the width required to meet the buffer type. Like a typical Type C, we feel like a 10-foot buffer would be fine, but if you went up to a Type B, then 15 to 20 feet would be a requirement in order to make sure you're able to plant that to meet the standard. We also want to evaluate the type of trees that can be planted in those small spaces, and so that's why we have a required, put a requirement in ordinance to only plant certain tree species suited for those compact urban environments, and those that have, that don't have shallow root systems that would damage sidewalks and paved areas. So, hopefully, that's addressed some of your concerns. And this is the two options that council would need direction on, or there could be another option if you didn't want these two options. But this would allow bio-retentions to be planned, allowed to be put in streetscapes buffers. And Option One be that provided that specimen hardwood tree stands are not adversely impacted, and the buffer is adjacent to a non-residential use or a zoning, or a non-residential zoning district. And so, the second one is just the same, but it bumps down the size of the tree to 10 inches, 10 caliber inches or greater, that you would be impacted. So, be happy to answer more questions on that when we get to it. And these are just some of the pictures I showed you at the work session with an example of a bio-retention in a streetscape at the CVS in Kildare and Kilmaine. Okay. The last section is replanning requirements. And this allows for, if you take a champion, healthy champion tree out, you are required to plant back inch for inch on the site. And so, staff or you all approve that, then applicant could do that in several ways. One, they could take existing tree saved areas that are not regulated already and put that in permanent open space, and you would kind of measure the caliber inches in there and get 150% credit for those healthy trees in there towards your requirement to plant back. If that didn't work, or you did a combination, then the next option would be to plant the new trees installed on the site. And so, trying to get all those in. But we do have spacing requirements. You couldn't plant them more than 30 feet adjacent to each other because you didn't want those to grow out. So, if they ran out of space on that site, the next option would be to find planting trees on town or public sites, potentially in medians, town parks, or other public facilities. And the last option would be to, if those others didn't work, is to install trees on another site within a protected areas. Like they could take, maybe they have another existing site they're developing, they could add some more plantings to the buffers and streetscapes they have. The exception to this is in the town center and redevelopment sites that you would only need to install up to the trees you can plant on the site. And so, and you would only go up to three inch, and is the biggest tree you would plant in those areas. So... Okay. You were presented the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation at your June work session. Just to refresh your memory, the Planning and Zoning Board at that time recommended unanimously for approval of the tree protection regulations. However, there have been some significant changes since then to enhance it based on your feedback. But following the public hearing, staff would recommend approval of this amendment with Option One with regard to bio-retention, to look at the not disturbing specimen tree stands. And so, with that, I am finished with my presentation, and I'm stand ready for some questions after the public hearing.
Very good. Now's the time for the public hearing on the tree protection regulations, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions and comments or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the tree protection regulations for champion trees and other related changes, led around 27, Item E2, with Option One.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
I would like to make, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, you made a motion.
Okay. Just, I would like to thank Mr. Rucker and all of town staff. I think it speaks volumes that when we first heard of this, we had a huge number of developers and builders and citizens that came and spoke. And I think it does speak volumes that no one came up to this public hearing to give us, in this case, negative feedback that we've heard quite a bit. I think you all have done a great job, and this is a great compromise to have a win-win situation and still protect all the trees, not just for all our citizens today, but for all our children tomorrow.
Yeah, I'd like to thank for your leadership, because I think that you directing us to have that stakeholders' meeting was a critical part in success of this.
Ms. France.
Thank you. I will support the motion. I too would echo Ms. Bush's comments, and thanks to staff, this has not been an easy one. I do have a little reservation and a little heartburn about allowing BMPs in the buffer. I think I've made that clear during the work sessions, but I think so much of this ordinance is good that I don't know that I could let that one concern prevent me from voting for this. I would, however, hope that as anything that we do, we monitor it, and, you know, and if tweaks or changes need to be made in the future, then we'll do that. But I think this is a really, I'm 90-something percent pleased with what we've got here. Like I said, I would also like to send along my thanks and appreciation to you and your staff for all the work you've done.
Thanks. Ms. Yurov.
Yeah, I also, I think, Don, you're 100% right. I don't know if there's any of us who are 100% in tune with every, look how complex this thing is. I mean, it's amazing. I know I was in the minority on a lot of decisions as we went along, but I really think the way you presented it tonight sums up the majority opinion and is very faithful to what we came up with in our work session. And you mentioned at the beginning that you've been working on this for nine months. That's not a coincidental number, because I think there are a lot of labor payments along the way with this, and I really thank you for owning this. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Other comments?
Ditto, ditto.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we need a motion for the comprehensive plan consistency statement for the tree protection regulation.
Okay. Where is it? You know, I was so focused on the line.
4.3.
There it is. Make a motion, oh, it's just right there, that we approve the, was it consistency?
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive. What he said.
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan for consistency. And reading.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Parker. That takes us to Item 5.4, is the West High South rezoning request. We're going to hear staff report. We're going to allow the applicant to explain their request. Then, we'll conduct the public hearing. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezone 32.4 acres on the south side of West High Street, about a half mile west of Kerry Parkway. This is a vicinity map. You can see West High Street, southwest Kerry Parkway here, Davis Drive, and CSX Railroad is to the west in this area. And then, here you can see Salem Church Road. This is a closer view of the area where you can see the property in relation to the Bishop's Gate Plan Development District, and also in relation to the Old Salem subdivision immediately east. This is an even closer view, where you can see on the southern end of the property, there is single-family residence and a number of outbuildings associated with that. You can also see, this southern boundary is the boundary of the jurisdiction of Apex. The parcel that you see highlighted here, outlined in black, contains the driveway that provides access to this, to the developed portion of the site. And on that area is a house... And on that area is a house that is on the historic inventory list, built circa eighteen eighty-one to nineteen ten. The existing zoning of this site is R forty. And you can see there is an, adjacent to the site is the PDD District Bishop's Gate. This is the area of the Old Salem subdivision. The zoning that you see here, R eight C. When this subdivision was initially rezoned in nineteen ninety-seven, it was, the zoning district was R ten conditional use. With the change to the land, to adopt land development ordinance in two thousand and three, the R ten district was eliminated, which is why you see an R eight C there indicates that previous R ten district with, converted to the R eight after the LDO adoption. This shows the existing equivalent zoning in the area of the Plan Development District. The colors that you see shown with these areas basically match the, the closest zoning district that we have related to the lot size and the uses that are allowed in those areas, just for comparison purposes. The proposed zoning district for this site is R eight conditional use. And the proposed, there is one proposed zoning condition that would limit the land use to ninety-two detached dwellings, which is a density of two point eight-three units per acre. The Cary land use plan shows a designation of LDR for this site, low-density residential, which allows one to three units per acre. There are no stream buffers or floodways impacting the site according to Cary's GIS This shows the existing and proposed greenways and street-side trails in the vicinity of the site, but nothing that impacts the site directly. This shows Cary's transportation plan. Cary Parkway and Davis Drive are major thoroughfares. West High is a collector. And then you'll note here that there is a future or proposed collector road shown through the property that extends through the subject property to the southern boundary. The reason that this stops at the southern boundary is because that is the jurisdiction boundary with Apex. We have had discussions with Apex and related to this case and coordination issues related to the road. And I was informed that the town is, the town of Apex is looking at their transportation plan to include this remaining, this segment, to provide that connection, to include that in, in their plan. And that is something that is in process at this time. With regard to transit, there are future, as a future C-Trans fixed routes shown on Cary Parkway and Old Apex Road. This is a notification map showing properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did receive a number of protest petitions related to this site, which I will discuss. This is a valid protest. There were seventy-one protest petitions submitted or parcels submitted with the protest petitions. There are a number of different concerns expressed. I tried to summarize those, list them here. A number of the petitions did not list specific concerns, but there were many that citing traffic issues, density, school overcrowding, a number relating to green space and trees, demands on services, decrease in property values and quality of life, and one that cited structural impacts on existing homes from construction activity. I'll also note that staff received numerous calls from residents in the area and had a lot of discussion with a number of residents in the area regarding the proposal. There's several, several items that were raised during those conversations and in the protest petitions that I just wanted to point out and provide some information on them. First, one of the major concerns was the fact that West High Street terminates short of Davis Drive. As I mentioned, the CSX Railroad is here in this location. With regard to this issue, when, when West High Street was extended through this area with the Bishop's Gate subdivision, there was a requirement at that time, and that was in two thousand and two, for the road to connect to Davis Drive over the railroad. The developer worked trying to gain approval from the railroad to make that at-grade connection for, over a period of about five years, was unable to do that due to requirements for other crossings to be closed and the developer was not able to accomplish that. And after the, that long-term effort in two thousand and seven, the town authorized the payment of a payment, or authorized payment in lieu of the waterline dedication that had originally been intended across that area and also released a letter of credit for the actual road extension when it was apparent that the developer was not going to be able to make, make that connection happen. So that's a little background as to why you can see where the road was planned to go across, but that that does not exist at this time. This illustrates some of the traffic patterns in the area now that illustrate some of the concerns that we have heard from the residents. And you can, you can see this in the pattern of the location of the protest petitions, if you recall that map. Here is West High Drive, which of course, as I've mentioned, does not make the connection to Davis. So there is the connection to Cary Parkway, which is currently not signalized. This is Medina Drive that goes up to the north and connects to MacArthur Drive. We've had, heard a lot of concerns from the neighbors with traffic along Medina coming, you know, from the existing neighborhood, to be able to come out to an area to get to a traffic signal and, and, you know, traffic that, that utilizes this route. Likewise, we've heard from a lot of residents in the southern portion, from West High Street through Old London Way to where drivers in trying to get to the south will come to Salem Church Road, come through this route. So this is, that's an issue of, that has been of great concern with, with many of the residents that I wanted to, to point out to you. And then you can see from, with the subject property in this location, this link that would provide another access point to Salem Church Road is a very important piece of the accessibility puzzle that will need to be looked at with this rezoning request. Again, these are, I've explained these concerns, the traffic on Medina Drive going to the north. Also would point out that in response to some of those concerns, our transportation staff has already issued a signal warrant study for the intersection at West High and Cary Parkway and expects that study to be completed in six to eight weeks. And again, as I was discussing, the connection, the traffic through Old London Way that's of a concern, and just wanted also to reiterate that the collector road that would connect West High and Salem Church through this property is on the, our CTP will be linked with Apex's transportation plan and well, and as well, and that this is an important link in addressing the circulation needs of the area. And that concludes staff's report. After applicant's comments and public, public hearing will be available for questions.
Very good. This time I'll invite the applicant forward to hear their comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Adam Ashbaugh. I'm with L-Star Management here in Raleigh. As you know, L-Star has done several significant projects in the town of Cary in the past couple of years, and we feel especially ready to take on a challenge like this. We've done this several times. And so, you know, throughout the, the process that we've been undertaken so far in, in public meetings, in email conversations, in phone conversations that I've had with adjacent property owners, homeowners association representatives for the different neighborhoods, whether that's Bishop's Gate or the, the Old London neighborhood that you mentioned, we've heard really three specific conditions. In addition to the traffic that Mary so eloquently pointed out, one is that of land use and the concern about compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods. Our proposal before you tonight is for R eight conditional use, which is consistent with the low-density residential, future land use designation for this area. It also is the identical zoning that exists for Old Salem, which is just to the east of the property. If you recall, we did the estates at West High, which is just on the north side of West High Street here, that was R eight conditional use. And that will allow us to develop lots that are, that are identical in size and consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. The second concern, of course, was the traffic. And recognizing that, you know, that there've been these issues with West High Street and people having to cut through to, to really find the, the path of least resistance, if you will, to get either north or south from West High. What we are offering to do, and we've, I've talked with Mary about this, is although our project is below the threshold to do a traffic impact analysis, we'd like to offer that we would do a traffic impact analysis to analyze intersections that might be affected by our development. Secondly, we've worked with the underlying property owner for that strip of land that Mary mentioned that would provide that additional connection to Salem Church Road. Now although, again, that's in the town of Apex and it, it wouldn't necessarily need to be rezoned, I've had conversations with Russell Dalton, who is the traffic, the transportation engineer for the town of Apex, and we've talked about what improvements might be required on Salem Church Road in order to make that connection. So we're willing to include that as a condition of this rezoning as well. And the third thing we've heard is, is schools and, and the potential that, of the impact that this might have on the schools in the neighborhood. So I've had conversations with Laura Evans, who is the senior director of student assignment for Wake County Schools, and Judy Stafford in her office. What they told me is that currently for this property, the schools that, the base schools for this area would be Laurel Park Elementary and Salem Middle School, both of which have capacity. The one school, the high school, Apex High School, which does not currently have capacity, that, that will be relieved once Apex Friendship High School is constructed in two thousand and fifteen. So my understanding from talking to the Wake County School Board folks is that the schools that would be the base schools for this area would not have capacity issues. Okay? Again, we, we look for, we realize this is the first step. We look forward to a continued dialogue with you, with staff, with the adjacent property owners. And, and again, we want to demonstrate on this project, the same way we've demonstrated on every other project that we've done in the town of Cary, that we can be good neighbors to the existing residents. We want to be respectful and we want to, you know, coordinate and, and be compatible with what, what they've grown used to. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ashbaugh. Now's the time for the public hearing for the West High South rezoning request. At this time, I'll invite the first speaker forward.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council members, and also Ms. Spearman for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of some of the residents in the Old Salem Development. My name is Thomas Moniani, and I've submitted a, a petition, which several of my neighbors signed, excuse me, and it's based on the recent legislation by the state legislature regarding to future school funding, that there will be no in anticipation funding for, for anticipated student population growth. And we'll therefore have a lower per capita student funding for each new student that comes in. And by their projection, there are twenty-nine minimum students that are going to come in from this, if not more. And with respect to the last speaker's comment about the schools, it's my understanding that the children in the Old Salem Development, who thought they were going to the middle school, have now been told that they are going to be bussed, if they don't already have a grandfathered older sibling in there, they're going to be bussed to another school. And there's a rumor, I haven't seen the letter, that the ones that are grandfathered in will have to arrange their own transportation. So that may be, you know, there's a time thing with schools and conversations. I don't know when the last gentleman spoke to the school board. The other, and my next point is about traffic on West High onto Southwest Cary. I'm glad they're doing a traffic study. There was a vehicle incident there a year or two ago where two people died up at Chatham, and it's a rather bad turn. And, you know, I'd like to also say that the trees on that median at the intersection of West High and Southwest Cary Parkway need careful attention because the, in, in the spring, the boughs get heavy, they drop down and you can't, can't see. And that's, it's detailed in what I presented. The next one is the traffic out of, going the back way into Old, Old London and Salem Church and trying to cross the railroad tracks onto Davis. From what's said tonight, I understand that to be Apex's area, but it needs a, a, a light or somebody is going to get really creamed in that corner. And the other thing that I've been asked, asked for is they're talking about doing the tie-in to Beth Barra into Old Salem. And the people in Old Salem have asked for speed bumps to be added on, on Moravia, Kindred Way and T, and T Light Lane, because people have a tendency, when you're trying to get to work, to try to hustle it. And we'd like speed, speed bumps. And one other thing, in the minutes to the prior meeting that L-Star put out, they indicated that they thought the HOAs ought to get together to ask CSX to open the, to provide a crossing on West High. I'd like CSX to do the railroad crossing, I think would be safer for everyone, but I think it's not the, the existing HOA's responsibility to get the crossing. If L-Star wants to develop the land and make a profit, I hope they do, that's their problem. It's not mine. I'd love to see it. I'll sign anything they want to show that I would support it, but it's their, their problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Gotham Patnike. I live on Old Salem subdivision of T Light Lane. The speaker before me, I think, addressed most of the concerns. My main objection was about the West High Street into, going into Cary Parkway. Most of us, I think, who live there work in the triangle and then they make the left turn. Very few, like me, make the right turn towards, going towards Raleigh. Majority of them do make the left turn, and that's really a part of concern. There was a meeting held on May, it was like a pre-hearing meeting, and what was astounding was, when I moved in, I, I did call up was, when I moved in, I did call up the Town of Cary planning, and I was categorically told, I do not have the name and the person and the time and date, but I was told no further development would be built unless the connection, West High connection to Davis Drive would be made, before that being made. Now, in that meeting, we had people from the subdivision, I do not know what the subdivision is called, it's this part of Apex, and then there were people from Old Salem, then there were people from Bishop's Gate 1 and 2. And each speaker after another made the same reference, that they had called up the Town of Cary, and they were categorically told that no development would happen till that connection is completed. So all of us were told that. I mean, whether they have proof or not, I do not know, but I did not have proof, but I was told that. And in the same meeting, the gentleman who's representing the developer, he encouraged us to talk to CSX and see, CSX is the railroad road people having the objection. And he asked us to talk to them and, you know, see what can be done, and he suggested many ways. But what was a little bit disturbing was that he left the battle to us. I mean, he was like, the residents were the fodder for the cannon of the railroads. I mean, I would rather have him, you know, the gentleman become the general who leads the battle rather than directing from the back. And I appealed to this board to not allow this project to go ahead till that issue is resolved, have that connection to Davis Drive, which each one of us have been told. I mean, this will be, I'm sorry to say this, but it will be misleading on the part of Cary Planning Division, because each one of us had called in, and, you know, it's like misleading their own citizen. And we had to have developments after development come in after that. So that's one note I hope you folks take into account. We are not lying. I mean, we did call to find out, because that was a point of concern, because we had one road, West High come meet Davis Drive, and majority of the people made the left turn. So I hope you all take that into account when you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I live on West High Street, which is west of the projected area. And the two concerns I have-
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ray Pettibone.
Thank you.
And I have two concerns. One, in your original documentation on your website, reflected there would be between 39 and about 69 children in the 92 houses. To give you a little background, there are 35 homes in the area I live in. 28 have children, seven never had a child at the household, and one had a child that graduated. There are 42 kids in that neighborhood right now. Actually, there's a 43rd one, who has cerebral palsy and doesn't move around that much. There are eight kids who are in college. One at Chapel Hill, one at NC State, one at Furman, three at UNC Wilmington, and one at Wake Tech. So the idea of 69 kids, plus or minus, in 92 houses, when you take a look at that, is unrealistic. And I need you to take a look at what the number of children will be based upon what is represented with that area. And the second issue I have is the traffic study that talked about the movement of vehicles in the AM area, AM timeframe, and the PM timeframe. And they're talking a low number. We have 15 houses on city wall streets, but there are only 29 cars. But 25 of the 29 vehicles move between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, either to work, to take a child to preschool, middle school, or high school. So you've got 25 vehicles that move every day. So when you start looking at your traffic pattern and say, it's low, I believe our neighborhood is very consistent with a lot of neighborhoods, that most of the vehicles do move in the morning and at night. Looking at a traffic pattern of less than 100, I believe we need to take a look at what the traffic pattern will be. And the next thing is the high school. Apex High School will close in two years for a year remodeling. Friendship High School hasn't been built. There's no idea right now of the new children that will be going to high school, how they're going to get there. Are the parents going to drive them and come back through our area? The one thing you haven't taken into consideration, L-Star is building across West High Street and building X number of houses there. That has never been taken into account, the impact upon the area. So I believe there's 40 some odd, 50 some odd houses there. Look at the impact just of those cars and those kids into a proper study. So I would like you to take a look at, one, what is the proper number of kids that are going to be in that area? And two, take a look at what you really consider mobile vehicles at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, going to school, going to work, taking children to wherever. You know, ours is 25 out of 29. And I think that's a realistic neighborhood. You would all agree that a large majority of the cars in your neighborhood move between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, and between 5:00 and 6:00 at night come back. And so there'd be a lot of traffic. I'm not against the plan, I just want to have a rational review of what you consider are children going to be at those houses, and the number of vehicles that will be at those houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Elliot Tally, I'm on the HOA board-
I need you to speak in that one to your left. Thank you.
Sorry, I won't talk long. I'm Elliot Tally, I'm on the board of the HOA of Bishop's Gate. Ross is my neighbor, and he'll be speaking on behalf of Bishop's Gate Board.
Greetings, council. I'm Ross, I live at 106 Manor Garden Way.
Ross, could you give us your last name?
Broadbeck.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Bishop's Gate Board and the 260 residents. I'm also speaking on behalf of 40-plus petitioners and residents on the contact list for this issue, as well as 137 homes on the residential roads directly impacted by this rezoning, and the six-plus middle and elementary school bus stops that are on those roads. The issue with this rezoning, I think particularly, is traffic, at least as far as we view it. The West High connection to Davis Drive, like you've heard, has not been made. It was planned in 2005, but it was never made as part of that Bishop's Gate development. There were occupancy limits in place at the time, and there were connectivity concerns at the time, so this is in 2005 timeframe. Now that road has not been completed, and we're now in 2013. All the traffic that's coming out of West High, as you heard, is going on Cary Parkway, which there's no light, there was the Chatham accident. It's going on to Old London Way, which is a residential street, but it is the shortest way to Davis Drive South. It's also going on Medainer Way, and one of the things that was not mentioned in the traffic study was that RTP is north, and most people are trying to get to RTP to work in the morning, and they're using Davis Drive to do that. So not only are they going to Cary Parkway, most of them are actually going up Davis Drive, because it's the fastest way to go to RTP. So we have all these three issues here. We have all this traffic going through Medainer, there's discussions to move school bus stops because kids are, you know, there's worry that kids are going to get hit by cars. And now, we have these three problems, it's only going to get worse. Definitely, we need the connection to Salem Church Road, that is a great thing, we definitely need that. Something should be done about Cary Parkway. But ultimately, like many of these residents have expressed, the real problem is West High, and it is a hard problem. We do know about the railroad, we know that this has been something that's been going on for a while. But now we're building 130 new houses, not just 92. I would like to mention that there are 38, the other gentleman said 50, there's 38 houses going in by the same developer, now there's going to be 92 more. They also volunteered to do a traffic study, which I think is great. They said they don't have to do that. The reason they don't have to do that is it would take 93 houses to require a traffic study, they're building 92. So I would like to take that into account. I'd also like to mention that I live within 800 feet of where this is going in, and the first time I heard about this was when I heard from the town. So that definitely, you know, makes me ask some questions. The first guiding principle that's actually listed in the Cary Growth Management Plan says that we need to ensure adequate infrastructure and services are available concurrently with new development. And right now, I don't think those infrastructures in place. It's definitely not available concurrently, and it certainly is not even available now. I'd also like to mention the Town Council criteria for consideration when reviewing rezonings. Number three says to maintain sufficient levels of public safety and transportation to existing development, I'm paraphrasing a bit, but we really already do not have sufficient levels now. And if you look at the Bishop's Gate history, you'll see that we didn't have back then, and it was a problem. Also, number five says that the rezoning should not have a significant adverse impact on property in the vicinity of the subject tract. There's definitely an adverse impact here, and it's significant, and I think you can see that with the number of people that are here. And I would ask that people who are here who are not speaking, if they would, stand up from Bishop's Gate, there are other people here. As you can see, there is a very large opposition to this going in. But I would like to say that we're not against development. In fact, my wife and I have only lived here for two years. We moved to Cary specifically because it's a progressive, growing area, and we like that. And in fact, I'm not against anything that's going on with L-Star, except for the fact that we can't have development at all costs. And right now, this is development at all costs. This is let's put something in because we want the money. And we want the money too, but we think that we need to take the steps that are appropriate before we do that. I just ask that you listen to the concerns of private citizens, and not just the concerns of private developers and special interests. And I would say, please, don't push this development forward without providing adequate infrastructure. And finally, I would say that if we don't take steps to address the dangerous traffic conditions now, it's only going to be a matter of time before a tragic accident does occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm the acting general manager of the partnership that owns the property. I'm the oldest person around that knows anything at all about this land, other than my cousin over my right shoulder, he was born and raised on the farm, still lives there. My brother is over on my left-hand side back here, he claims he knows as much as I do, he knows about the genealogy, but I want to remind him, he's 11 years younger than I am. And I was working on the farm before he was born. My immediate family is the one that's done all the development out there. Old Salem was not actually the first. We had to sell property in 1987 for Cary Parkway to be built, the two churches were built, then Old Salem proceeded on to Bishop's Gate. There's been a lot of speculation here. When I saw the complaints up here, I just couldn't sit still, people saying we're lowering the value of the property. I've been over backwards, trying to keep a nice development out there. I'm a state licensed land surveyor with an engineering background, and I know the rules, I know the regulations, and we've been over backwards to make a nice area, and I think we have, and to continue on. There's been several things said about, it was about the money. I want to make it clear that we had, we really did not want to sell this property. We've held this property in our family since the early 1800s. It's been passed down through the generations. These last tracks that we're talking about here tonight is my inheritance, it's the only thing I'm getting out of the farm, other than a little bit we just sold in the past. The money situation, the reason we're selling the property, I'm 67 years old, I have a wife with Alzheimer's, I need to move along, and we want to do a few things with the proceeds. I've got a son that was assaulted, actually beat to death, laid in a coma for over three months, I have to look after. I have nobody to leave my portion of the property to. My sister lives in Georgia, she'll never move back up here, she has two children, they have no desire to come up here. I have, my brother has one daughter who's young, there's no leaving it to her. So it came to a matter of having to do something with the property, and it was time to move along. We've had the property in the family since the early 1800s, and we have the right, we think, to move along. And all these objections, you know, everybody has the right to say what they want to do. But I remind everybody that lives in every subdivision around there, we owned every bit of the property, every house out there, except for the townhouses and the condos, which were not on our property, we've not objected anybody to come in. And I'd like for a little respect and a little thoughts on what they're saying, and I'd like for them to bring everything together in their mind, even the cross of the railroad crossing, as y'all presented, we worked on that for five years and couldn't get it done. It's not going to happen. So anyway, I'm going to leave it with y'all. I respectfully request that we move along with the zoning, which matches the property development zoning that we started back in the late 80s. And I think that all works well with the property. We tried to restrict the building to nice houses, will not deteriorate in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jan Haneck, I live, I live in the Weathersby, which is part of Bishop's Gate, and I also have a lot of concerns about this rezoning. I live in that corner there where West High was supposed to connect further to Davis Drive, and there are a lot of cars turning around and going onto Old London Way. And there's a lot of traffic and a lot of fast-moving cars around that corner and then down to Old London that way. What's interesting is, you can always see a lot of children playing basketball and walking around in the neighborhood on Old London Way and in that area. So I'm worried that if we add, it's 92 plus the 38 new houses right now without much connection to Davis Drive, this will just get worse. So I was at first really upset when I read about requiring 92 houses, which is exactly one below the requirement for traffic studies, so I was happy to hear that they will do a traffic study. So in my opinion, in order for this to go through, there needs to be more outlets out of this neighborhood. It's not enough to just have the Old London Way to go to Old Salem or Salem Church Road. The same thing, I feel like there is a necessity for a traffic light on West High Cary Parkway, because if I go to the gym, turning left, for example, it's very hard to turn, and it's very scary. And while my children are small, so I don't really know much about schools yet, I feel like the fact that the Apex High School is full right now is something that's concerning, because we are already at this moment adding 38 houses to that area without any changes. And if we would add 92, that could be not so great. So I feel like there would have to be some connect, additional connectors to Salem Church Road in the minimum, and probably connection of West High to Cary, to Davis Drive as well, before we can add over 100 new houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chris Martin, I am a, I'm speaking on behalf of the St. James Village Homeowners Association comprised of 51 property owners. We oppose the rezoning request until traffic can be resolved, until these traffic problems can be resolved fully. St. James Village is located in Apex, we're immediately south of the Cary town limits. Our primary subdivision street is Old London Way, and Old London Way connects to West High Street, connects West High Street to Salem Church Road in Apex. And as you've seen on these maps, as everyone has described, we're a cut-through street. Old London Way is in effect a- Old London Way is in effect a shortcut from Cary to Apex by way of West High Street, and we are directly impacted by vehicle traffic traveling to and from West High Street. We oppose the rezoning request because there's currently not adequate streets, connecting streets, to address the existing vehicle traffic using West High Street. Further development along West High Street will only increase the traffic burden on existing connecting streets, including Old London Way. The current rezoning request does not fully address those existing traffic problems and may only make it worse. West High Street was originally planned as a connector street from Cary Parkway to Davis Drive. That connection still doesn't exist, as has been described here tonight. It ends just a few hundred yards short. It's a dead end, and we really feel like that connection needs to be completed somehow, some way. It's got to be, we've got to push that through to resolve this traffic problem for everybody. The high traffic volume, the high rates of speed through our neighborhood have created serious concerns for personal safety, for quality of life. Again, therefore, we oppose the rezoning request. Furthermore, we oppose any new development along West High until this problem is resolved. We'd like to see West High open to Davis Drive, and furthermore, we'd like to see an alternate route to Salem Church Road in Apex. And we appreciate the developers volunteering to consider that, to build that into the rezoning request. We appreciate that. How significant is our traffic problem? In 2012, the Apex Police Department conducted a traffic survey along Old London Way at the request of St. James Village homeowners. The 2012 traffic survey documented heavy traffic volume, over 1,000 vehicles per day on our quiet residential street, and vehicle speeding at rates sufficient to warrant the implementation of traffic calming measures along Old London Way. Since that 2012 traffic survey was done by the Apex Police Department, the traffic volume has dramatically increased. It's noticeable. In 2014, residents of St. James Village completed a petition to the town of Apex to install a speed hump along our street, along Old London Way, as a means of traffic calming. Our speed hump was installed just last month in July. In our survey process, our petition process, we were required to have a 70% positive response from our 51 lot owners. When we reached 36, we stopped counting, but we didn't even go door-to-door. We mailed it out, and the response rate was 36 was very quick. We didn't have to work very hard to get the petition completed. So we realize that there's not a requirement for a traffic study with this rezoning request. However, I'd like to provide our traffic study, and I brought that with me tonight, and I will have it circulated to you. But we have that study with us tonight, conducted by the Apex Police Department. And let me add that a few years ago, when Bishop's Gate subdivision, this has been mentioned already tonight, but when Bishop's Gate subdivision was developed in Cary, just our north, residents of St. James Village voiced concerns about this issue, the potential for a traffic problem in our neighborhood. Our residents and Apex planners all expressed concern about this traffic issue, which we knew was sure to come. And in response, we received assurances at that time that West High Street would be connected to Davis Drive. As hard as it may be, we were assured this would happen, still not happened. So we really need that opening. We really need to get West High open to Davis Drive to resolve this for everybody, for Cary residents and Apex residents. So once again, the residents of St. James Village oppose this rezoning request. Furthermore, we oppose any new development along West High until West High is open to Davis Drive and until additional connection, an additional connection is provided to Salem Church Road in Apex. Thank you for hearing our concerns.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Steve Vining with L-Star. I want to reassure the council that just as we have with every project that has come before you, we're sitting up there and we're listening very carefully. We understand, excuse me, that with projects like this, and frankly, it's most projects in Cary now, which are infill projects, if we look around, where Cary is no longer spreading out at its edges, but it's filling in. And we have to take into account all the concerns of the neighbors and listen and do the best we can to address those concerns. I think we have a good track record of doing that with some very difficult projects that have come before the council. I would hope that we'll be able to do that with the surrounding neighbors and come up with some creative solutions to address their problems. And that's our commitment to you and to them, that we're going to work closely with them and do the best we can to address these issues. The traffic issues obviously are the primary ones, and hopefully work towards coming up with creative solutions. And obviously, if you have any questions for us or for Adam on the engineering side, we're happy to answer them. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing?
I'm going to close the public hearing and bring Ms. Bierman back up. I'll start the questions. A lot of comments about Davis Drive, West High. It's my understanding that CSX, to cross a railroad, you have to close two or three existing crosses, crossings, or build over them. They have to be grade separated. Is that?
That is our understanding as well.
And one project over a railroad track, we're talking tens of millions of dollars, right?
Certainly.
So that connection is not a town decision, but a CSX decision. So just off the bat, I want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly because that sounds like a remote possibility at best, even if the town jumps up and down, screams, yells, everything we want to do, it's not going to happen. So now that takes me the other way, Cary Parkway. There's no light there. It's a very dangerous intersection. I understood you say that we're going to measure the criteria for a traffic light. Is that correct? That's existing conditions and possible future conditions, or is that part of the traffic study?
My understanding in talking with their transportation, traffic staff, is that a warrant study is being, has been initiated to start looking at that, to make the determination of whether or not a signal is warranted. There has not, based, I'm assuming, based on existing traffic and proposed or development that has already been approved.
Okay. And so maybe the 38 homes, but not the 92 homes. But the traffic study will add information that would help us with that decision.
Right. The...
Good evening, council. Yeah, that's the first time that I think staff has heard about the offering to do a traffic study. So certainly, we would perform the traffic study to look at future conditions of their build-out. We kind of took a proactive stance after hearing some concerns about the neighborhood, about accessibility in the neighborhood. Our first thought was maybe is a lot of, they're taking some of these streets, particularly going north, because they can't get out to Cary Parkway, and so they use the path of least resistance. So we've, as a staff, are conducting a full count at that intersection and do a signal warrant study for existing conditions. And I think we'll probably have to also look at, if we do have a signal there, what is the diversion from maybe some of the streets, particularly along Medina, how that would maybe interact in that. So again, we need to kind of take a look at maybe that from a future condition as well, of just existing homes out there today. But we'll work with the applicant on a traffic study that will look at all the appropriate intersections, particularly internal and external to the site as part of the rezoning process.
Okay, stay right there because I'm going to follow up, and I apologize to my colleagues. I'm all into traffic.
You don't have to apologize.
So you measure criteria if it doesn't meet DOT's criteria, because my understanding is their decision, not ours, for traffic. We measure it, but we go and say, "Mother, may I?"
Correct.
And they say yes or no. So if we don't measure it, then we add in the traffic study that's been proposed, and then that criteria either meets or doesn't. If that doesn't meet, and if we're close, can we beg and borrow and still get it in anyway?
I think we just...
Are they strict on their criteria?
They're fairly strict. Again, there's eight warrants for criteria for requiring a traffic study. They generally look at more than just one criteria. So we'll just have to see how many criteria that we can meet, and then again, we're going to have to look at, you know, trying to get DOT persuaded that this is in the best interest of the motor public and the neighborhoods in general.
And I think no matter what, it is, but that's just my personal opinion. Now, while you're there, let's talk about the road that's proposed to go south.
Okay.
If the applicant works with the property owner below, is there a way that this is tied into us at all? This might be a legal question. So let's say the property owner says, "Yeah, you can go through my property," and Apex says, "Yeah, you can build this segment of road." Is that totally separate from this, or can it be included in any way in this proposal if all the things were in place to make that happen?
I think I can...
Who can answer that question? Voluntarily, we're not asking, I mean, we're not requiring it because we can't, but if they volunteer to do that...
I think if that were offered as a condition, we could certainly work with them and make it something that was, council could consider and accept if you were inclined.
So they could say hypothetically, "We've got the agreement. We've got the approval. We will do that before the first CO," or something like that, "and we can accept that."
We will certainly work to make it, the wording such that it could be something that you could accept.
Okay.
That's a fancy way of saying maybe.
Maybe. So there's a lot of maybes with this, but there's some serious traffic issues, and I'm just trying to explore all the possibilities. I really unfortunately think that crossing the railroad is going to be a monumental task at best, and...
I think the information about the connection to Salem Church Road has just been recently come to bear, and I think staff has some latitude in trying to work with the applicant to craft a condition like, say, that is workable within our system, so.
And I would just echo that, and my understanding with what the applicant is offering is to ensure that that connection is made. There are some challenges because the area is in Apex, and we need to make sure that there are ways that we can work conditions. We do have some ideas for how to pursue that, and as we move forward between here and moving on to the Planning and Zoning Board, we'll be working with the applicant and also with the town of Apex and with our staff to make sure that we can come up with something that cleanly accomplishes that.
Okay, very good.
Thanks for starting us off, Mayor, with all those great traffic-related questions. I have a couple as well, and then I want to talk a little bit about schools unless somebody else wants to talk about traffic. You know, that connection south to Old Salem Church Road is a great idea, but how many of you have driven Old Salem Church Road? It's a two-lane country road, so dumping a lot of traffic on that is not the solution. It's going to help, but that worries me, especially if you're going to try to take a left. Taking a right is going to be hard enough, so I have concerns about that. I will tell you that I vote down West High Street, and trying to take a left from there onto Cary Parkway is taking your life in your hands, and we need a traffic light there anyway, with or without this development or any other that's left to come, because it is very frightening. It's unfortunate about West High and the Davis connection because it seems like such a no-brainer if you just look at it, but given the obstacles that you were, you know, kind enough to review, Mayor, I don't see it happening either, and it doesn't make any of us happy. But I also think, even if we were going to be able to do that connection, if you're going to turn right on Davis from there, that's a big enough challenge. You're going to turn left, that's going to be, people are going to come out and say, "I'm worried about people getting hit there." Remember the Farm Pond Road conversation, right and left? I mean, that road is heavily traveled and difficult to navigate often. So I think there are a lot of obstacles with this plan. I appreciate the applicant volunteering to do a traffic study. I wonder if it's possible to consider the Apex traffic study that Mr. Martin mentioned. I don't know, and so I would ask if that, is that, can, and all be taken into account in the traffic study the town does, because they've already done some of this work. So that's just a question I have. It doesn't have to be answered tonight. I think there are a lot of obstacles with traffic, and I would offer the floor to anybody else who wants to talk about traffic before we switch topics.
I actually do. Sorry, Mr. Jensen. I was trying to catch you before you left. There were several comments by many of the citizens with regards to the number of houses and how that might kick off a traffic study, the number 92 and 93. But I remember, and actually looking it up, that that number was something around the number of trips, 100 trips during peak hours. Could you address that for all the citizens in the audience?
Yeah, that's correct. A little over a year and a half ago, in February of 2013, we repealed our advocate public facilities ordinance, and at that time, we put in place that during rezonings, if a rezoning case would generate more than 100 peak hour trips, then they would have to conduct a traffic impact study as part of evidence and testimony of their rezoning case. And we have certain guidelines for how that study is being conducted. So the threshold is 100 trips. This particular rezoning application is right on the line of whether one would be required and one is not. So based on, based on the number of units that they put in their zoning case, it fell just below the justification in our code to require a traffic study.
Okay. It fell below, that's where, that's where all the citizens...
If they could have built one more unit, they'd have been kicked off.
They probably would have kicked them into one, mandated by our LDO.
Gotcha. So, but that, is that, am I understanding, is that a moot point since they already have agreed to do a traffic impact study?
Again, I think we would, if that is something that they volunteered to make, to do, yes, we'll work with them to get a study conducted in accordance with our guidelines. And again, the information that you had presented, certainly that is, that is good statistical data that we would, we would give our traffic consultants access to. And again, we'll be confirming some of that traffic data because we'll be, we'll be asking for new counts to be done as well.
So have, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Did they offer to make that traffic impact study?
My understanding tonight is that they were making that commitment to do a traffic study.
I just wanted to make sure. I don't, can't see them in the audience, but if they're waving yes, that, oh, I see a thumbs up. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And Ms. Edcock, you gave us a great process, so I'll follow your process. Anything else on traffic before we switch gears? Okay, I'll turn it back over to you then.
I don't mean to monopolize the floor, but the comments about the schools were helpful. I appreciate that, and I'm sorry I didn't catch the gentleman's name who spoke. I appreciated the fact that he did so much homework, but it makes me ask the following questions. So he talked about Laurel Park Elementary and Salem Middle being the base elementary and middle schools for this area, and that they were not at capacity, but yet further statements he made made it sound like they were capped, because that's kind of the process that, no? Because I know you've been looking at this a lot lately. So my question is, what's the current and projected capacity, and are these schools capped? Because otherwise, why do they have to be only grandfathered in if they have a sibling there? I mean, so that's just a...
I think I might be able to address it.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All of the development in the west side of Cary, west of 55, is putting too much pressure on the middle school west of 55 that cannot accommodate all of the children. So what they're doing is they're moving many children over to Salem Middle. And so what it sounds like, I had not heard this, but what it sounds like is that now we have students that would normally logically go to Salem Middle because they live close by, but because they live east of the school, they're now being told, "Well, we're moving everybody eastwards. We're going to have to take these kids and move them eastward."
Right. It's a domino effect.
Yes, it's a domino effect. And so it's really unfortunate, but the way that our schools work and this movement of students, it really supports the idea that everybody needs to be paying attention to all of the rezoning applications that come up, because something that's going to be happening six miles from you is going to have an impact on your school.
Right. It seems remote, but it's not. But then that, that's in conflict with the gentleman's statement that they have capacity. Because if they had capacity, I mean, they're going to take more students from the west, so they're going to, maybe they'll get it 100%, but my point is just really...
I think we would benefit from having the school board help us understand this, but I could see, yeah, I mean, we should probably ask our representatives that cover this area for some help on this. But what I could see happening is that, yes, they have capacity today, but they, the school board is now projecting how many students over capacity they are and how many they're going to have to move over.
That's my point, is that today they might be okay.
Yeah, today there might be capacity, but they may not have capacity next year or the year after because of this shift.
Well, the reality is, it might be base school today and not tomorrow. Bottom line is, the county's going to ship the students wherever they darn well please, regardless of what the parents think, care, or otherwise. You know, we need more schools. There's no question. It's true that growth is straining the schools, and the school system is having an incredibly hard time... hard time keeping up with demand. You know, Cary does a phenomenal job as far as communicating with our school board.
Well done.
Yes. We send them growth data trends. They know every unit that's being built in this town before that construction ever starts. But yet, for so many reasons, we're continuing to be decades behind. So you can have all the meetings you want with the school board, it ain't fixing a thing.
I think we wanted the information with the school board so we could understand what they were doing.
I don't think you can understand anything they're doing.
Okay.
Well, I would just say it's difficult to build enough schools when you don't provide the funding for that. That's a whole nother conversation.
That is a whole nother conversation.
And I will turn the floor over to the next person who wishes to speak.
Mr. Yaroff.
Certainly, traffic safety in schools seem to be the two major issues, and no question about it with this, but I do want to add one more. And that's just to remind everyone that a yardstick that we use to measure new rezonings is our comprehensive plan. And one component of our comprehensive plan is our historic preservation master plan, the goal of which is to protect, preserve, and maintain Cary's historic resources. So I would trust that the applicant, as this moves through the process, will take the buildings that are on this site and the preservation and protection of them into consideration. Those buildings are on our historic inventory. So it's just, probably pales in comparison to the traffic safety issues that we've been discussing. But it certainly is one portion of our comprehensive plan and hasn't been addressed tonight. So I just hope as we move this along that there's some consideration taken for that house and the outbuildings.
Other comments?
The main issue for me is going to be the traffic. Reality is lot sizes, density, yada, 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 it's pretty much like kind and quality with everything around. The reality is they have an existing traffic problem today regardless of this development. To put another 90-some-odd homes on top of that problem doesn't really make a lot of sense. So I would hope that the applicant, staff, residents, everybody can work to try to find to see what traffic solutions may be available that help alleviate the problem, and then maybe this can move forward. But speaking to the applicant with a valid protest petition on this one, you have a tough road ahead of you. I really do hope that you've heard the concerns of the residents and the council, and do what you can to address those.
And that's a very good way to sum this up before we send it on the P and Z. It's valid protest petition, for those that don't know, requires six council members to vote for approval before approved. So you're in the driver's seat. But the ultimate solution for this property should be low-density residential, which is being proposed. So it has several complex issues which involve the railroad, DOT, other municipalities, and it's very, very, and the schools. And it's just very, very complex. And like Ms. France said, it's going to be very difficult for the applicant to corral all this and make this all work, but they have a record of making things work. So my advice to everyone, of course, is to continue meeting, continue getting information, continue to ask questions, and continue to work the process. And that's to the best for everyone. Anything else council members want to add?
I'd just say it's always better when everybody talks to each other. The product is always better. Whether it ultimately passes is another story, but the product that will come to us will be better if people work together and keep talking to each other.
I do want to add one.
Yeah, the same thing, go ahead.
One thing. Transportation Plan showed a road going from West High down to Old Salem. It showed a long drag strip type of a road. I know it's not a zoning consideration, but I would hope we are not putting in one long drag strip of a road. The road network to the east in Old Salem looks pretty appealing to me.
Yeah, actually, my point was going to be about the road as well. I would love to know what Apex's plans are for Salem Church Road, because I'd hate to get to the end where everyone, we have a number of ideas coming back, and then Salem Church Road is still planned to be an old country road for many, many years to come.
That's a very good point.
And Ms. Bierman, just since we have so many in the audience, do we have an idea of when this will go to planning and zoning?
I don't have a specific date. I think the fact that there's a traffic study that's offered, zoning conditions that have been conceptually offered to work out on a number of issues that I assume will need to be addressed before moving forward, so I would not venture a date at this point.
So it's at least a couple of months out?
I would assume so.
Okay. And so stay tuned.
I would also point out if there are any zoning conditions other than those specifically addressed tonight, then it would be a public hearing.
That was my next statement, thank you very much. So just to repeat, if anything changes, if there's going to be another public hearing, it'd be at a planning and zoning board meeting for this proposal.
If there are new conditions offered, yes.
Okay, so as we said, a month or two goes to planning and zoning board. I do thank everybody that came out and were providing your opinions and your thoughts, and please stay involved and engaged in this process. Thank you. We're going to move now to our next item, which is the item 5.5 Habitat for Humanity rezoning request. We're going to hear from our staff and conduct a public hearing. We will not take action tonight. Instead, we're going to refer this to the planning and zoning board. And once again, Ms. Bierman will introduce the item. Ms. Bierman.
This is a request to rezone about a half acre on the west side of Evans Road. It's about 130 feet north of Rochelle Drive and West Dynasty Drive. This shows, this is the vicinity map. You can see the parcel in yellow. This is Evans, Rochelle Drive here, and then the name changes to West Dynasty to the east. The existing zoning is R12. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. Zoning conditions include a maximum of two lots with land use limited to detached dwellings. The minimum lot size would be 11,000 square feet. Minimum setbacks would be 10 feet on each side, 25 feet in the rear. A shared driveway connection for the two lots to Evans Road, and a 20-foot Type B landscape area along the northern property line. This shows the Cary's land use plan. This area is designated for low-density residential. This would clearly fall within those limits. There are no stream buffers or floodplains shown on the property. There are no parks, Greenway facilities in the vicinity. On the transportation plan, Evans Road is shown as a major thoroughfare, and the Rochelle Drive, Rochelle Drive, West Dynasty Drive is designated as a collector. This is the map showing properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did receive five protest petitions expressing general concern related to compatibility issues with the neighborhood. However, none of those were within the 100 feet of the site, so that it is not a valid protest. And that concludes staff's comments. Following the applicant's comments in the public hearing will be available for questions.
Okay, this time I'd invite the applicant forward to introduce their item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Kevin Campbell. I'm Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity of Wake County. And I just thank you all for the support you've given to affordable housing. This is a prime example of that for Habitat to provide. As you know, the cost of acquisition of land and development of that land is a major factor in affordability. By approving this request, this rezoning will make that possible for us to keep it affordable. As you may know, but all state Habitat sells homes throughout the county to families earning between 30% and 60% of the area median income. And families are typically service workers, essential in a lot of cases to the community. And we've been proud to, over the years, really scatter this affordable housing throughout the county, but including about 50 homes that we've built over the years in Cary. As you heard, the site is just slightly less than 1,000 square feet short of allowing for two lots, so that meaning just about 500 square feet short per lot based on the current zoning. So we think this is an excellent land use, an opportunity to provide affordable housing. The homes that we build will be sold based on market rate appraisals. The homes will be in the 1,100 to 1,300 square foot range, depending on the size of the family, which is very compatible with the surrounding area as well. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Habitat Humanity rezoning, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Lynn Neiman. And about 45 years ago, I benefited from a Habitat house. And about 20 years ago, when I was under Maryland, I spent a lot of time swinging a hammer for Habitat. And those houses make a lot of difference in people's lives, and I support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. Mr. France.
Yeah, first question, why a shared driveway?
That was to, just to minimize the number of access points onto Evans Road.
Okay. Well, man, I guess that's my only question. I find that somewhat out of character with the surrounding neighborhood. It's pretty much predominantly large lot, single-family homes with individual driveways. Being that Evans is a major thoroughfare, that would be pretty visible for most folks. So that is a concern of mine.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I just mentioned to Ms. Robinson that after looking at some of the lot sizes we have the last few weeks, 11,000 square feet sounds spacious, I have to say.
I don't argue the lot size. Most 11,000, all 11,000 square foot lots in Cary each have their own driveway.
Oh, I hear you, Mr. France. And I wondered if there are any other shared driveways along Evans Road. Ms. Bierman, not trying to put you on the spot, but just wondered how out of character this might be.
Most of the areas that have redeveloped along the road were part of a larger subdivision where there's a single access point, and then where most of the lots don't have direct access onto Evans. And just looking, you know, just looking into the future as the remainder of the areas developed on that, on a major thoroughfare, just trying to minimize the number of access points.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right, we're going to send this to our planning and zoning board for their review and their consideration and recommendation, and we'll see it at a later date. Thank you, Bierman. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is in agreement with the North Carolina Turnpike Authority for I-540 and Morseville Parkway interchange. Ms. Cove will present this item.
Yes, good evening, council. This item for your consideration is a partnership with the North Carolina Turnpike Authority and the North Carolina Department of Transportation to help construct the interchange of Morseville Parkway and NC-540. As background, the vision for this road and the interchange have been in place for quite a long time, starting back as Morseville Parkway is ultimately planned as a four-lane median-divided facility connecting to NC-540 via interchange. That's on the town's comprehensive transportation plan. In 2004, the town did a corridor study and a preliminary roadway design for the roadway. Between 2007 and 2009, we completed and applied for a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers and North Carolina Division of Water Quality. And the permits were issued, and they're actually valid through 2029, which is fairly unique. They do stipulate only construction of two lanes until the four-lane volumes warrant a four-lane section for the crossings. In more recent years, in 2011, the North Carolina Turnpike Authority constructed a two-lane bridge over the turnpike for future Morseville Parkway to accommodate our future plans. The interchange was not included in the 540 scope, however. In 2011, the town did a study on Morseville Parkway Extension, and we included the interchange in that environmental study and provided the environmental documentation. And in 2013, a preferred alternative was selected for that roadway. And currently, we've completed 25% design plans, which are at NCDOT for review right now, and in an environmental assessment, which is in review for the Federal Highway Administration. The roadway extension and the interchange are critical parts of the town's comprehensive transportation system. As you can see here, it's a major east-west corridor, so, right here. And it's one of the few corridors that actually continues across 55 and Davis. The interchange is also very centrally located for Cary citizens to access NC-540. There's an interchange to the north at 55, which is about a mile away, and also an interchange to the south on Green Level West, High House, which is a mile to the south. Having this option of an interchange here would give us probably some flexibility. If more vehicles took 540, less cars might be on 55, which would allow us to give some green time to the side streets crossing 55. So what we're presenting tonight is not a traditional P3, a public-private partnership, but there has been quite a lot of private development involved in building the road and giving us really to where we are today. So just a quick look at this map from west to east. The blue-green section is the Greystone Development, and they've constructed a majority of that portion of Morseville Parkway. The orange section is the section we're talking about tonight. The purple section further east is the Friars Gate Development, and then the red section is being constructed by Highcroft. So currently, the project on the interchange is unfunded currently. Earlier this year, council directed staff to work with the Twila Road LLC partnership, and we've had good discussions with them, and they're obviously ongoing. And in July, the North Carolina Turnpike Authority approached the town staff with the initial discussion on the proposal that we're presenting you tonight for the funding partnership. The project, including the extension as well as the interchange of the remaining two-lane section, is anticipated to cost about $26.7 million. The funding to date is approximately $9.1 million. And that's made of grants as well as town funds that were primarily used to match those grants. The remaining funding you see is the gap on the bottom, which is proposed to be filled with the North Carolina Turnpike, $12.5 million, and an additional town funding of $5.1 million. So staff does recommend that staff continue working with the turnpike and the DOT under the terms that I've outlined for you. We further recommend that we appropriate $5.1 million from the general fund fund balance, as indicated in the fiscal section of the staff report. And finally, to grant the authority for the manager to move the funds between the three projects identified in your staff report. We have been answering questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cove. Questions, comments?
Just good comments. I'm going to let Ms. Robinson start because she, how many months ago, asked, can we have these conversations and try to get this? It seemed like a long time ago.
It seems like a long time ago, yeah. I mean, this is a very exciting opportunity for the people of Western Cary. People right now have to go through a pretty circuitous route on roads that don't have enough really capacity to handle everybody that's trying to get out in the morning and get back in in the evening. So this would be a real asset to our community, and I think it'd be a great service to provide to all of the families that are adding to our tax base in Western Cary.
Yeah, I really think we need that east-west connection badly, so I think that will really help. And this is, the way I see it, a good bang for the buck. I mean, we're getting NCDOT to do this early, so.
I would just say, I put this in the category of answer to prayer, because this is what we wanted, we've got the money and the general fund balance, and the only thing better than the word partnership is the word funding before it. And I think we should go for it and take all the staff's recommendations, and I'm willing to make a motion unless somebody else is ready to speak.
I only had one more comment, but I'll second your motion.
Well, I knew that we accept all three staff recommendations.
And I'll second.
Okay, go ahead.
And then my next comment would, I agree with you first that it's an answer to a prayer, but if I were going to pray about this, I'd pray for no more toll, because I really think that it is an answer to a prayer. It absolutely is. But I still think it's a huge disservice to all the people in Western Cary that we're the only ones that have to pay for the toll, and that no one else on 540 has to pay. I just, if I were going to pray, that, I just lay it all out there- I just, if I were gonna pray, that, I just lay it all out there.
You mean about this?
I want both of them. But I don't think that's gonna happen with the way things are. But I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that although it will be a help to a lot of citizens, absolutely will, I totally agree with you. The first thing that we'll hear is, I agree, it's probably worth it for the 85 cents or whatever it is that it costs me each way, it's, that's worth my time, but it just doesn't seem fair for so many of Cary citizens to have to pay if no one else.
I agree that it's.
I would say amen to your prayer.
And just to be clear, since I got an email on this today, again, this is not our decision. We didn't set the toll, we don't want the toll. Or maybe some do, but I don't.
But we don't like it. Well, just to be clear, my comment about answer to prayer was getting the interchange. It was certainly not about the tolling, and thank you, Ms. Bush.
Just expanding.
And I have one comment to make about the fund balance, just so everybody's clear. We are required to have so many months of operating budget in our fund balance. We went above and beyond four months, and this is beyond that, what's left over that we're using. We're not digging in to any of our reserves.
Correct.
And the intent to use is for items just like this, where you're getting the value for the money, and you're using it as a shared thing, where we get a bigger, a bigger bang, you know, bigger return.
Absolutely. You're getting a 17-plus million dollar connection for a little over $5 million bucks. I mean, how the heck you say no to that?
Yeah, that's good math.
Right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Cove. We now move to item 6.2, petition for removal of traffic calming pavement markings on Castalia Drive. Oh, Ms. Cove's up once again.
Thank you. Again, this item for your consideration is the proposed removal of some traffic calming devices in the Weatherstone subdivision. As background, this is another project that's been going on for quite some time, starting in 2004, and kind of with installation in 2007, staff worked on an extensive traffic calming program along Castalia, includes a smorgasbord of traffic calming devices, including this double-yellow center line and some marked parking spaces. We have an upcoming town street resurfacing project on the 1,600 block of Castalia, and when we sent out letters of notification for that, a resident contacted us and talked about the potential to remove this double-yellow center line and the parking. We do not have a specific paving schedule for this section of the road, it's just that all our town streets on this year's paving have to be done before it gets cold. So here's a picture, looking southbound on Castalia towards High House, of the section that we're talking about. On the right-hand side, where that sign is, you can see very light some of the marked parking spots. And here you can see the double-yellow center line that the residents talked about a little bit earlier is obviously offset because the parking's on one side. There still are 11-foot lanes remaining, which is our traditional width. Just here, looking in the other direction, you can see it maybe a little bit better, the marked parallel parking spots on the side of Castalia. The parking spots are used for a variety of purposes, including providing access to St. Michael's. Some people park there for school and walk their children into school or for church purposes. So as for the town's traffic calming policy, staff did draft a petition, which was linked in your staff report. The petition was returned with 14 signatures, and then another informal petition drafted by a resident was returned with 98 signatures, or I'm sorry, 94 signatures. The informal petition is also included in your staff report. The total signatures were 108 out of 203, which was a 53.2 percent return rate in favor of removing the striping and the marked parking. This is a rather large area of influence, and that's really because we developed this petition for removal consistent with the original petition that was done on that whole neighborhood with all the traffic calming devices along Castalia, because they were developed at the same time. So the town's traffic calming policy, as with many of our policies, focuses on having broad community support for traffic calming, and therefore it indicates a desired level of support of 70 percent to add traffic calming as well as remove traffic calming. We did review the traffic crash data. There was two crashes in 2012, neither of which had anything to do with the traffic calming devices in place. As I mentioned earlier, that the street is fairly wide, it's a collector's street with a 35 feet of back of curb to back of curb. The stripe parking is eight feet wide, leaving you the 22 remaining feet, which is standard of our typical local street dimensions, so 11-foot travel lanes. So staff does recommend that council not support the request to remove the double-yellow center line striping, and recommend that we move forward with our street resurfacing project and replacement of the existing markings as currently scheduled. We have to take any questions.
Ms. Cove, earlier tonight, residents asked that they have more time to get to 70 percent. What hardship would that create with the resurfacing project if they had more time, if we waited till the next council meeting, say, for instance?
Can I follow up to that real quick? They came close, or a little over 50 percent, with a different petition.
That's correct.
That was not a town petition.
That's correct.
They need to get 70 percent with the town petition.
Okay.
That's up to council's discretion.
No, I think it's important for us to follow our policy.
Absolutely. We have this policy for a reason, and it's served the town well over the years, and I don't see a reason to deviate from that. And when people start creating their own petitions, it worries me a little bit. I'm all for given time, but it needs to be the 70 percent with the town petition.
Sure.
I do think it's, I mean, just to elaborate on that, I do think it's fair. Summer's a very difficult time to get people, there's school that's out, there's vacations, you know, a quick turnaround on this, I think I heard from a citizen, you know, with just three weeks ago when they were starting this work effort. So personally, I would support giving them more time, but I think it's interesting, we haven't let you answer the question, so.
We're bad about that.
Sorry, what kind of hardship would that come?
Now you've put me in a hard place with the answer to the question. But there are implications. The primary one would be if we delayed it very much longer, we would probably have to delete this street from the resurfacing list for this year. It could be pushed to next year, but that's, of course, open to whether the project is funded or not.
How does the markings impact the paving?
Well, I guess we could repave it and not mark it.
And they could be working on, you know, I mean, I'm fine giving.
I think that's a perfect solution.
Temporarily not mark it.
Right, just move forward with repaving and give the citizens time to get the other 19 and 1/2 percent or whatever they need, and bring it forward, and then we'll, if they can get the 70 percent, we'll, I mean, I would be in favor of waiting.
That's right.
Okay, so it's a process question.
That's right.
You know how I am with that process, y'all pull up a chair. I'm totally in favor of giving them more time, and I heard Ms. Cove say, I believe, that there was no tight timeframe for when this would start. So I think paving and not remarking is not a good message, because then it comes in and it looks like a change. I, I wanna know if process oriented, if they have to start over with a new town petition or if they pick up where they left off with their 20-some or whatever.
14.
14 signatures on the town petition, that's what I'm gonna do. They need to go, to start fresh, no, they can start, count those 14 and go forward. I think that's reasonable, and I do not think we should repave until we have a plan to restripe, if that's what is going to happen. We're talking about another meeting. I'm sorry, Jack, bless your heart.
No, that's right. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, well, you can go back to the previously. I guess the question I have is, are we, are we focusing on the wrong problem? If, if the current striping is safe enough and consistent with all of our other roads, why are we bending over backwards on this? I don't, that's what I don't understand. I mean, I could see the initiative of folks wanting to do it, but really, when you look at 35-foot curb, the standard of 22 feet, isn't this what we have for safety anyhow? I mean, I just, I'm kind of torn. The question I have is, it's almost like having a debate on color or something else. Do we really have a safety issue? That's the question. Now, if somebody has an opinion, we do, and they want to step forward with a petition, that's their right. But if, if the data we have and the practice we have throughout town, that this is within where it is everywhere else, you know, are we, are we making much ado? And I'm really, that's, that's a question, so.
If I may.
Help me enlighten me.
Ms. Robinson?
I just, I'll just give input as a mom. The perception I think a lot of people have when you double-stripe a road is that that is a faster thoroughfare. I think just people associate the yellow striping with a faster-moving road. When we put in, when Weatherstone was built, it didn't originally have yellow striping. And then when we went in and put in a combination of traffic calming measures to try to figure out what it would take to slow down the cars, that was one of our devices, but I don't recall it ever, that one device ever being regarded well by the subdivision. And I think the subdivision now looks at this as an opportunity, a clean break where they can have it repaved and removed, and I think that the message that they think it'll send to drivers is that this is not supposed to be a fast-moving street. Now, it is debatable whether the yellow stripes cause people to drive faster or whether it slows it down because it narrows the road. But if I receive a petition from 70 percent of the neighborhood telling me that they think it sends the wrong message having those yellow stripes and they'd rather not have them, I support them. I mean, I actually think that makes sense.
I'm willing to give them a couple weeks with a town position to see can they get to 70 percent. I don't think that impacts the project timeline at all. Two weeks. I think that's fair. If they can get it, fine, it's what the community clearly wants by majority. If they can't get it, they don't.
Yeah, okay. And I'm not, I'm not debating, we have a great standard of the 70 percent, if we reach that, but let's just do it the right way. And it does mean that there might be some hardship out there, but how passionate are they to, to collect the signatures?
Seems like we're closing the motion.
Just one more question, or, sorry, were you ready?
I think we're probably gonna ask the same question.
Okay, go ahead.
Because Ms. Cove said that we have the option of choosing between accepting the petition that the citizens generated versus the town one. Is that correct? We could consider that valid. I mean, I personally think that it should be, and you guys are saying no. Okay.
Well, and the other thing is they didn't reach 70 percent even with their own petition.
No, they didn't, but why do they have to go back to the same people again and ask again?
Because everybody needs to get the same message.
I'm sorry. On a personal one, you can put it, you can, you can characterize the problem any way you want. At least if you're going with a town one, I think it's going to be based on objective facts, and it'll be put together.
And I would just add, as the mother of two teenagers, consistency is everything. And you know what? If we let this group of neighbors, as wonderful as they are, create their own petition, the next group's gonna say us too. And I just think that's not a good message for us. I'm fine with giving them more time.
I have two questions that I really, go ahead.
By the way, Jennifer, when I see two yellow lines, I really slow down.
Do you really?
I do.
Because he thinks it's a golf cart.
That's why I slowed down.
So can I, I have two questions. The first one is, what is the difference between the town-generated petition and the other petitions? Are they the exact same thing, but on town paper? I mean, what is?
We're gonna let Ms. Cove answer.
I am, I'm letting her.
Thank you. In this case, as with most traffic calming, people are very passionate one way or the other, and when you read the, the citizen-drafted petition, it's, it's very passionate in support of the removal.
The preamble.
The preamble, okay. And then the second question is, I haven't often seen striped parking spaces on a subdivision street like this. Is that common? Do we have it other places?
We have done one recently that Councilmember Echuck, I think, was also involved in on Plantation.
Absolutely, I was just sitting here going, Plantation Drive.
Right, which is a very similar collector roadway, very wide, and a lot of times, the width of those streets, people tend to feel like they can go faster on those, and they are really designed to be at a higher speed.
No, not the double-yellow line, I'm talking.
She's talking about parallel parking on the side of the street.
So any way that we can take away some of that roadway space and make it feel narrower, that's been an effective traffic calming measure. So that the double-yellow lines in this case were to separate traffic, and the parking spots were to take away some of that, that extra space.
So it's 11 feet on the, on one side, on the narrowest side? Now, that's not wide enough for a bike and a car.
Not for a separate bike lane, that's correct. But, and if I make.
Because I drove down it the other day, and it's, I mean, I, I respect all of the, all of the council members, but I really do suggest you drive by it. There is a blind curve, it does feel very fast, you know, I, I do, I'd like to see the citizens be, continue their passion and get in the 70 percent, and maybe this will be a different kind of discussion that we're having. But it does, it, it absolutely does feel like I'm about to hit a mailbox.
It's so interesting, I drive through there a fair amount recently, and I didn't have that sense at all, maybe I had my mind on something else, but I did not have that sense at all. And what I'd say is, I don't have an opinion about whether it ought to go or stay, I have an opinion about listening to what the citizens say. If they hit, right, if they hit 70 percent or greater, no problem, take it out. If they don't, leave it in. I mean, it's, I don't have an opinion about whether it's right or wrong. I just have an opinion about whether they should have enough time to generate signatures on the proper petition, and may I make a motion and then you talk or before?
Well, he wants a motion.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm about to do. I move that, let me see if I can find the number of this. Hush up. I move that we table a decision on item 6.2 and give the citizens time until our next meeting to regenerate their town-issued petition.
There's a motion and a second, discussion.
Oh, really? I was gonna say, you don't want any more discussion, do you? No, sir, I'm sorry.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries. We'll see this on September 11th. Thank you, Ms. Cove. We now move to item 6.3, rezoning requests for Step Property North. Staff will give a report. Planning and zoning board gave their report at the last meeting, and council may take action. Ms. Fearman?
This is a request to rezone about five acres on the north side of Green Hope School Road. It's about 2,000 feet west of NC-55. Here you can see Green Hope School Road, and then to the east, NC-55, and to the west, NC-540. The land use plan designation is medium-density residential, which allows three to eight units per, or, three to eight units per acre. The existing zoning is R-40. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. This was discussed at your meeting on August 14th. There were concerns raised at that time related to lot size and the transition to the existing neighborhood was tabled to allow time for the applicant to propose additional conditions. Regarding the lot sizes in the neighborhood, I put this slide together just to, to show when you compare to the Cozy Oak Avenue area, the Highland Village neighborhood to the side, the minimum lot size with, for the residential lots there is about 5,600 square feet for the smallest lot. The largest slot is about 1,800 square feet with the median of 7,400 and average of 8,300. So that just gives you some clear numbers related to those slot sizes. Terms of the proposed zoning conditions, you can see here the changes that have been made since you last saw this. With regard to the density, the applicant has reduced the density from a maximum of 3.9 to 3.3. Also, the conditions that you see underlined have been added, minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet within 50 feet of the northern boundary, 7,000 square feet elsewhere, and by comparison, the minimum in the TR district was 5,000 square feet. Also, the minimum lot width, which is 40 feet in TR, was, would be increased to 50 feet. And the minimum building setbacks were increased to a minimum of five feet on the side and 20 feet in the rear. Also, there was a condition added that the, if there are CBU units proposed for the mail, that those would not be located directly in front of the residence, they would basically be located within the area that would be taken up by the side setbacks. And then there were some traffic mitigations that were previously included that remained Because there was a very quick turnaround from, with this item, in, in terms of this detailed wording of the conditions, we just had a couple of cleanup items just to make these conditions more, just a little bit tighter, the meaning has not really changed. I would make one comment on item or condition number seven related to the CBU. It would be staff's recommendation that conditions related to the placement of the CBUs not be included as zoning conditions, as it's something that's going to be applicable basically to so many residential developments that we have, and it's. residential developments that we have, and it's, will always be a site plan issue, something addressed at the site plan. However, the condition was offered, and we did work with the wording a bit so that if it was your, if it is your choice to include this condition, we feel like this wording could be utilized and that it could be an implementable condition. That concludes staff's comments.
Okay.
Be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments.
No, I would like to thank the applicant for working quite hard with all the ideas that we gave you, and I especially like the CBU changes, so I guess I should make a motion.
If you want the CBU changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve rezoning 13 REZ 28, the stit property.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
I have comments.
Discussion.
Yeah, I feel like I'm kind of the point person for citizens conveying their concern about the approval of units west of 55. And I received an email today in which a person who lives west of 55 told me that his son had to walk home his first three days of middle school due to growth and the lack of adequate busing. I'm afraid it's going to continue to get worse before it gets better. And this person wants to know what he needs to do to help get the point across. I really believe that we're in a crisis west of 55. And even though I'd like to reward this applicant for making these concessions and trying to improve his project, I just feel like I would be disingenuous if I voted for it. Because on one hand, I'm saying to the people who live west of 55, I understand this is a severe problem. And then if I, on the other hand, were to go ahead and approve this, I wouldn't feel like I was being fair to them. So I feel compelled to vote against it. That is not to say that I want to vote against all these different projects. I just feel like we need to have enough infrastructure to support the people that are coming here.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, five, two.
Make a, see, we don't have to, there it is. Make a motion that we approve the comprehensive plan consistency statement in rezoning 13 REZ, stit property north.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion.
Someone down there.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, four, three.
Did you vote against it, too?
Yeah.
I just don't like those statements.
Oh, okay.
So...
We now move to item 6.5, request for waiver waiting period subsequent rezoning application to Herndon Burke property. Ms. Fearman?
This property is located at the intersection of Turner Creek Road and NC 55 Highway. The property in question contains about almost 16 acres. And this is a request to waive the one-year waiting period for a new rezoning application. This is a vicinity map showing the location of the property on Turner Creek and NC 55. This is just a map showing the previous zoning request. Currently, this property is in Wake County. It's owned Highway District and Residential 40. The request at the time of the rezoning for case number 12 REZ 20 was to rezone to RMF residential multifamily conditional use with the number of zoning conditions. This just shows the timeline that the rezoning went through at that time. It was initially presented for public hearing of October, in October of 2012, proceeded with the number of revisions, a lot of public input, number of revisions to zoning conditions through, basically, the next year. And ultimately, on February 13 of 2014, the case was withdrawn. This shows a comparison between the previous request as the key zoning conditions at the time of the withdrawal in February of this year. The, the previous request included town homes as the permitted use with the maximum density of 5.9 units per acre, which would have yielded 93 dwelling units. The current proposal that the applicant is putting forth in requesting the, to be able to resubmit the request, is changing to detached dwellings only at a density of four units per acre, which would yield 63 single-family homes. The criteria for approval of such request is to consider if the applicant has shown good cause, such as a substantial or significant change to more, to one or more aspects of the proposal, and a supermajority vote of council is required for approval. And that concludes staff comments. We do recommend approval based on the length of time that has passed since the initial public hearing in October of 2012 and the proposed change in the dwelling type and the density.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, supermajority is how many council members?
Six.
Okay. Just make sure everybody's on the same page.
That was a trick question.
You had me worried for a second.
Yeah.
I thought I knew the answer, but...
Yeah.
Better not shout it out. I guess I'm wrong.
So council members, questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for waiver of the waiting period for subsequent rezoning application for the Herndon Burke property, PL 15-002.
There's a second.
A second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just, you know, I don't find any harm in allowing the applicant to resubmit what appears to be a pretty significantly different proposal. I think they've shown good cause, and I think it has been a significant change. Does not mean that this council approves it or is blessing it or anything. We're just giving them the opportunity to come back and try again.
It's a fairness issue. They have the right to come back and try something better. Because I remember how, what a tough decision this was, and they worked hard, but they didn't, you know, get over the bar. And I want to give them the chance to do a better job.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, I think good cause has been shown, but just go on record as saying this does not mean that I approve the current, the new proposal. I mean, that all remains to be seen.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Fearman. We now move to item 6.6, consideration of abandoning portions of utility easement at 1020 St. Charles Place. Ms. Cove?
Thank you, and good evening again. This is the consideration of the abandonment of the easements, as the mayor mentioned. The location is the site of the new Cardinal Charter Academy, shown here in this picture. This is the plat for the property, and I will zoom in for you.
Okay.
This is a closer look. Sorry, would you like the bigger one? This one has the small area shown to be abandoned and the hatched markings. The water line has been relocated to a new easement. And so staff recommends approving the resolution authorizing the abandonment of the selections of the utility easement that are located beneath the building.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. This seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We had one item pulled for discussion from consent. Item 4.3, Patel Brothers. Ms. France, have anything to say?
No, I don't have anything to say. I just, I voted against this when it came forward, and I just didn't feel good about voting for it on the consent agenda. So I just would like the opportunity to say no on this one.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move ratification of resolution Patel Brothers Retail Shops, LG 15-01.
There's a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. That is the end of our agenda. Unless there's other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.